11:00, 2015 is now 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Yeah.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
And Bruce Robinson is absent tonight.
Thank you. I don't see it on my agenda, but I'd like to stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Since this is our first meeting for this board, we need to elect a chair and a vice-chair. So, starting with electing chair first, do I hear any nominations?
I would like to nominate Nathan Long to be Chair.
I'd like to.
Nomination.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Oh. Motion carries. All right, about the nominations for Vice-Chair.
I'd like to nominate Riley.
I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Down to business. It is now 6:03 PM. I now open the consolidated hearing for license appeals, 2015-03 and 2015-04, appealing the decision of the Planning Community Development Director approving license renewals for vacation rental dwellings, with a condition limiting the number of bedrooms made available to renters to no more than five. The appellant, excuse me, the appellant and property owner for appeal 2015-03 is Emerald Cove LLC, for the residence at 1830 Northeast 66th Street. The appellant's and property owners for appeal 2015-04 are Susan Young and Mark Young, for the residence at 5778 Northwest Jetty Avenue. Board members, are there any abstinence of disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communication?
No.
Seeing none. Is there any objection to the participation of any board member? Seeing none. Following is a list of criteria that apply to the VRD license appeal hearing.
Lincoln City Municipal Code, Section 5.14.060, Criteria for Approval of a License and License Renewal. Lincoln City Municipal Code, 5.14.090, Appeals of VRD License Determinations. Lincoln City Municipal Code, Section 17.64030, Nonconforming Uses. Lincoln City Municipal Code, Section 17.08, Definitions, Vacation Rental Dwelling. Oregon Residential Specialty Code, Section R101.2, Scope. Oregon Structural Specialty Code, Section 310.2, Residential Group R, Definitions. And Oregon Structural Specialty Code, Section 310.5, Residential Group R3.
Thank you.
As you said, Mr. Chair, members of the board, these are two appeals of decisions I made regarding VRD license renewals. APP 2015-03 involves a six-bedroom VRD in Rhodes End owned by Emerald Cove LLC. This house was built in 2008, and the owners assert it was operated as a VRD since that year. APP 2015-04 also involves a six-bedroom VRD, also in Rhodes End. This house was built in 2007, and the owners assert it has been used as a VRD for an unspecified number of years. In both cases, I approved the VRD license renewals, but conditioned each of them to limit the number of bedrooms to no more than five. Both owners have appealed. Because the two appeals raise identical issues, they are consolidated for hearing here. Did this just cut out? Is it being heard back there? Okay. All right. The appeals raised two issues. The first is whether the building code's definition of lodging house, which limits a lodging house to no more than five bedrooms, applies to VRDs. The second is whether the two VRDs involved are exempt from the limitation as nonconforming uses. Turning first to the lodging house issue, when the city annexed Rhodes End in 2013, the two VRDs came under the city's VRD licensing rules, including the 2014 health and safety rules, specifically, in this case, the one regarding maximum allowed occupancy. The key provision of the occupancy rules is Municipal Code, Section 5.14.060 B4A, which says, "The occupancy of the VRD shall be limited based on the 1997 Uniform Housing Code. But in no event shall occupancy exceed the Oregon Residential Specialty Code Lodging House Limitations applicable to the residential structure or other predecessor residential code, e.g., UBC Lodging House Limitations. Occupancy may exceed lodging house limitations only in vacation rental dwellings constructed pursuant to or retrofitted for compliance with the current, i.e., the code in effect at the time of the VRD application and renewal, Oregon Structural Specialty Code. Occupancy in excess of lodging house limitations shall only be permitted in commercial zoning districts or such other districts as council may authorize by ordinance. The license shall state clearly the numeric occupancy limit for the dwelling, including specifically the number of bedrooms." I want to draw your attention to a particular part of this, where it says, "In no event shall occupancy exceed the Oregon Residential Specialty Code Lodging House Limitations applicable to the residential structure." That's the key piece in this, in these cases. And I should point out that there's two building codes involved here. One is the Oregon Structural Specialty Code. The other is the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. The structural code applies to commercial buildings and multifamily dwellings. The hotels and motels, for example, are commercial buildings. The residential code applies to one- and two-family dwellings and to certain other residential uses. And among these other uses are, quote, "detached lodging houses containing not more than five guestrooms," unquote. The Oregon Residential Specialty Code definition of lodging house, added to the residential code in 2011, is as follows. Lodging house: any building or portion thereof containing not more than five guestrooms where rent is paid in money, goods, labor, or otherwise. The total number of guests shall not exceed sixteen. Lodging houses include bed and breakfast and similar uses. Essentially, identical definition is found in the Structural Specialty Code, and that's been in the code for many years. Again, this definition went into the residential code with the 2011 revisions, but it was in the structural code for a number of years. The only difference between the two definitions in the two codes are, is that the explanatory sentence in the definition in the residential code, saying that lodging houses include B&Bs, that sentence is not found in the Structural Specialty Code. The structural code allows lodging houses needing the five-bedroom limitation to be built to the standards of the residential code. So you have the structural code saying, basically, here's an exception to our code, to the structural code, saying if you meet this limitation, the five-bedroom limitation, no more than sixteen people, then you can go under the residential code. The residential code is less demanding in what it requires. For instance, things like sprinklering fire resistance in general is more lenient in the residential code than in the structural code. Both of these, both of these houses were built to the residential code standards. Under the structural code, if a lodging house has more than five bedrooms or more than sixteen occupants, it is what's called a group R1 occupancy. That has, it's a building code term, has nothing to do with our R1 zoning in this particular case. It's, they have different occupancies, they have different letter prefixes, they have what's called assembly occupancies, which is like auditoriums and churches and what have you, that's an A occupancy. Residential occupancies are R. And multifamily hotels and motels are what's called an R1 occupancy. Those are governed by the structural code. A lodging house with fewer than five bedrooms is an R3 occupancy, and it's allowed to be built, as I said, to the residential code standards. Those uses that are built to the structural code, the more intensive uses, are commercial uses, and they're not allowed in the residential zone, in the city's R1 zone. And again, that's R1 zoning in that particular case, not the R1 occupancy. I know this is confusing, but I just want to make that distinction available, if not clear. Now, vacation rental is defined in the Municipal Code, Section 1708, as a dwelling unit that is used, rented, or occupied on a daily or weekly basis, or is available for use, rent, or occupancy on a daily or weekly basis, or is advertised or listed by an agent as available for use, residency, or occupancy on a daily or weekly basis. Again, it's a dwelling that's rented for, a dwelling unit that's rented on a daily or weekly basis. The appellant's assert that operating a lodging house entails renting out individual bedrooms separately in the manner of a bed and breakfast or an assisted living facility. Since the appellant's rent out the entire house at one time, they assert, the VRD is not a lodging house. But this argument ignores the first two words of the definition of lodging house, which are any building. So a lodging house includes any building or a portion thereof. So, use of the entire building does not exclude the VRD from the definition of lodging house. So a VRD, the whole building, with five or fewer guestrooms, need not comply with the structural code, it can comply with the residential code. Similarly, a B&B portion of the building need not comply with the structural code, it can comply with the residential code. A VRD is a lodging house under both the structural and residential code definitions, as I described them. Remember, the difference between those two definitions was just the explanatory sentence saying that lodging house includes B&Bs and other similar uses. So it meets the definition. It's a building, as specified in the lodging house definition, where rent is paid in money, as specified in the lodging house definition, containing guestrooms, as specified in the lodging house definition. If it has no more than five guestrooms, it's, actually, it has more than, if it has no more than five guestrooms, it's a lodging house. If it has more than five guestrooms, then it's a commercial use that has to go under the, again, under the structural code, and again, is not allowed in the city's R1 zone, or even the county's R1 zone, since we have county zoning in Rhodes End. If you accept the idea, or the argument, that lodging house rule does not apply to VRDs, but does apply to B&Bs, and also accept the idea that the lodging house limitation is intended to promote visitors' health and safety, then I don't see how that can be furthered by a distinction between VRDs and B&Bs, the way the appellant's have described it, especially since B&Bs actually have somebody onsite managing, and so in a sense that they're likely to be safer, because there's someone to tell you how to get out or what to do in the case of an emergency. In a VRD, you don't have that situation. So the distinction doesn't make sense, and the lodging house limitation should be read as applying to VRDs. And I want to make clear, this isn't something that, you know, the staff has made up on the fly, and just sort of said, okay, this is what we think should happen, you know, without much thought. Under the building code, the city is required to have a building official. That's a person whose job it is to enforce the building code, and they also have authority to interpret the building codes. At your seat tonight, you have a declaration from Dave Mortier. He's the city's building official, and has been for the last few months. In his declaration, Mr. Mortier states that he concurs with the opinion of the city's former building official, Charles C. Kaler, who was the building official for more than ten years, and who, last April, concluded that the lodging house restriction, limiting VRDs to no more than five bedrooms, or limiting lodging houses to no more than five bedrooms, does in fact apply to VRDs. So we have a former building official and a present building official saying the lodging house limitation applies to VRDs. Also at your seat tonight, there's a letter from Mr. Alterman, the appellant's attorney. With his letter, he provided you a copy of a state building code staff recommendation that resulted in adding the definition of lodging house to the residential code. Again, it had been in the structural code, but they added it to the residential code. It's Exhibit A to the letter. As shown in the rationale in that letter, actually, in that Exhibit A, it's shown in the rationale for the proposed change, one of the purposes of adding the definition to the residential code was to assist in correlating the two codes. In other words, having the residential code and the structural code essentially on the same page. I want to point out something else in that, in the rationale. In the next of the last paragraph, it says, "Oregon Structural Specialty Code, OSSC, Section 310, allows single-family dwellings needing the definition of lodging house to be constructed under the ORSC, which is the Oregon Residential Specialty Code." So again, he's saying, this is the city, or the county's, I'm sorry, the state's building code person, saying it applies to single-family dwellings. Making that very clear. So, he's doing that without qualification, saying that the lodging house limitations apply to single-family dwellings, and as we know, VRDs are single-family dwellings. And again, as I said, both the city's former and present building officials also say that the lodging house limitations applies to VRDs. So, basically, everyone whose job it is to say what the lodging house rules mean in Lincoln City are on record as saying that they apply in this situation, to where the building officials saying it applies to VRDs specifically, and the state people saying that it applies to single-family dwellings which, that meet the lodging house limitation of five bedrooms, and that is what a VRD is supposed to be. But even if you believe that, for some reason, that the lodging house limitations were not intended to apply to VRDs, as the building code was addressing something else other than VRDs, they still apply to VRDs in the city by virtue of the city's municipal code. Keep in mind that we're not applying the building code, in other words, we don't have the building inspector going out and doing something, saying, you're not in compliance with the building code. We have a city staff person saying, if you have more than five bedrooms, you're not in compliance within municipal code, which limits you to no more than five bedrooms as through the terms of what's defined in the building code. I give an example that may make that little bit clearer. Say we had a rule that said that church steeples can't be higher than what's allowed for cell towers, as defined in a certain provision of the municipal code. So that section of municipal code that applies to cell towers does not apply to steeples, and it doesn't, and it also doesn't apply to residential zones, because cell towers aren't allowed in residential zones. So if someone wanted to build a church steeple in a residential zone, they have to look and see, well, what, how high can it be? You look, and it says, well, it can't be higher than a cell tower, which is eighty feet, happens to be. So, we're not saying that it's a cell tower, we're not saying it's in a commercial zone, we're saying, here's where you go look for the number. The number's in this section of the code. So a similar thing is going on here. The municipal code is not saying how many bedrooms are allowed in a VRD, it's saying, go look at the building code and see what it says about lodging houses, because that's the standard we're applying. We're looking at the number of bedrooms it allows for lodging houses. So even if lodging houses were not intended to come under the, or if VRDs were not intended by the drafters of the building code to be included in lodging houses, that number is still there, that criterion is there, and that's the criterion that the city code applies.
Question, Richard? Would that be the same if their house out, they not have six bedrooms?
The code talks about guest rooms, and so I think that distinguishes like a long-term rental from the short-term rentals that we have with VRDs, where those aren't guest rooms, it's a full-time resident there.
So apartment, if you were renting it as a house on a six-month lease or a year's, you could have six bedrooms?
Yeah. The code has no limitation, actually, on the number of bedrooms you can have in a single-family house, being used as a single-family house. Now, there's long-term, you know, full-time occupant. If it's being operated as a vacation rental dwelling, then we run into, you know, renting the guest rooms, no more than five guest rooms, then you've got the lodging house limitation. The distinction is fairly easy to justify, where in a, someone's full-time residence, they're there all the time, they're familiar with how to get in and out, and frankly, they're unlikely to have a huge number of people, you know, unless it's the Dugers, or whatever their name was for that reality show, where they got nineteen kids or something. That size family is a real exception. Here, we're talking about a normal single-family, normal single-family, you'll see of, you know, two to, probably one to ten people, or something like that, or one to, actually, the code allows up to sixteen, and so there's, so I just think the distinction is rational, and again, designed for health and safety of the people who are involved. And also, obviously, it lessens the impact on the surrounding neighborhood. We're talking about single-family dwellings, or in a single-family neighborhood, having VRDs in a single-family neighborhood, where if you have, the more people you have, the more likely there's to be impact on the properties. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. I want to, turning to the nonconforming use issue, the appellant's argue that even if the lodging house restriction in the building code applies, VRDs are non, these two VRDs are nonconforming uses and entitled to continue with more than five bedrooms. It's true, they, this is true, they argue, because the dwelling house, the dwelling was constructed and operated as VRD before the city began applying the lodging house restriction. At the outset, I want to raise actually a jurisdictional issue in this matter. Nonconforming use, it's a land use concept. It regards lawfully established uses that the current, that don't meet the current rules, but are allowed to continue after the rules change. Again, they were lawfully established, but they don't meet current rules. At the time they were established, everything was fine, rules changed, and they don't meet the standard anymore, but they're allowed to continue because they were lawfully established. But example of that would be, remember the old Dolly Cove Restaurant in Rhodes End that burned down some years ago? That was, that area, Rhodes End is zoned as for single-family dwellings, county R1A zoning. The restaurant was established long before the residential zoning went into effect. It was allowed to continue to operate even though it didn't meet the zoning ordinance. And actually, when it burned down, it could have been reestablished as well, because they had a period of time in which they could do that. They chose not to, but it was, it's a good example of a nonconforming use. The city's rules on nonconforming uses are found in Chapter 17.64 of the Municipal Code. This body, the VRD License Appeals Board, Appeals Board, deals with appeals of VRD licenses, and that is under, um, Chapter, I think, 5.14 of the Municipal Code, not Title 17. Title 17, where the nonconforming use provisions are found in the code, it relates to land use matters. Land use matters are under the purview of the Planning Commission, AS the Planning Commission, and then up to the city council, and ultimately onto LUBA. Your jurisdiction as the Appeals Board is to matters arising under the VRD license rules in Title V. So that's where your jurisdiction is limited, Title V. Nonconforming use matters come up under Title 17, which is a planning commission matter. So in these cases, actually, we're not dealing with nonconforming uses, or land use, actually, in any way. We're dealing with violations of the VRD licensing rules under Title V. The fact that someone's been violating the Title V licensee rules for several years, from when they began operating as VRDs under the county jurisdiction, does not establish a Title 17 nonconforming use. You don't have Title 17 nonconforming use if you've gotten away with, for example, if you've gotten away with speeding down Highway 101 for years, and finally you get stopped, you can't defend saying, well, I've been, I've been speeding for years down Highway 101, and nobody's ever enforced that, so I have a nonconforming use, I'm allowed to speed. That's not land use. Similarly, the VRD license is not a land use matter. It's just licensing under Title V. But in some caution, I'll address the nonconforming use issues. Under the Municipal Code, Section 17.08, a nonconforming use is defined as follows. Nonconforming use means a land, means a use that was originally lawful, but no longer is a permitted use in the district in which it is situated. Any existing use for which zoning regulations now require a conditional use permit shall be deemed to be nonconforming until such a permit is secured. Similarly, Municipal Code, Section 17.64.030A, says in relevant part, "A lawful nonconforming use of land may continue as long as it remains otherwise lawful, provided that the nonconforming use does not cease for any reason for a period of more than six months." Key provision of both of these definitions is that the use has to be lawful. Key provision of both of these definitions is that the use has to be lawful. So it must have been lawful at the time it was established, otherwise then it's not a non-conforming use. Staff does not dispute that the dwellings at issue here were lawfully built as single-family dwellings with more than five bedrooms. The, as I explained earlier, the residential code does not put limit on the number of bedrooms that may be included in a single-family dwelling, and building a single, a six-bedroom single-family dwelling was lawful at the time it was done. But a six-bedroom VRD has never been lawful, the, at least built to residential code standards. Wasn't, they weren't lawful the time they were built, because the code then limited, as was explained before, lodging, limited lodging houses and no more than five bedrooms. Lodging house, a VRD is a lodging house, as both the, our building officials and the state and in general, just reading, plain reading of the ordinance makes clear. So in order to be lawfully converted from a single-family dwelling to a, to a VRD, a lawful VRD, it would have to be reduced, they would have to be reduced to five bedrooms or fewer, and that was not done. As it does today, the structural code and the residential codes that were in effect in two thousand seven and two thousand eights allowed lodging houses to be built to the residential code standards only if it had no more than five bedrooms. But at the time they were constructed, they both had six bedrooms, as they've admitted, and the fact that the county may not have enforced the building code's lodging house limitations of no more than five bedrooms does not render a six-bedroom VRD unlawful. Again, we get back to the idea of speeding, you've gotten away with speeding for a long time, or the sheriff wasn't enforcing speeding, that doesn't make speeding legal, even though you've gotten away with it for a long time. So in conclusion, I guess, I just want to summarize that the, the building code's limitations on the number of bedrooms that a lodging house may have, no more than five, applies to VRDs. That's clear from a reading of the plain words of the definitions, which is what the city council did in putting a lodging house rule into the municipal code. It's clear from the building, city building officials' interpretations of the lodging house rule, and it's clear from the state building code staff's interpretation. Also, there's no non-conforming use issue, since in order to be a non-conforming use under our code, the use must have been lawfully established, and these were not. And in any event, as I said, because nonconformity is a land use issue, it's not, not properly before you, and you can't make a decision in that regard anyway. So with that, I'll open up to any more questions.
Thank you. Board members have questions?
Yes, you said there might have, it could be allowed under special cases. Have there been any approval of special cases like this previously approved?
Um, I don't know that there, I'm not sure what you mean by special cases, there, there were, I want to say there was like a dozen, roughly a dozen, um, VRDs that we found had more than five bedrooms. All of them, except for these two, have come into compliance with the five-bedroom rule. A couple of them actually have, still have more than five bedrooms, but the extra bedrooms are in a, in a separate structure, so it doesn't count as, as that particular structure. But the only way there would be something special, I don't know, maybe someone could apply for a variance or, or something, or something of that sort.
Richard, if, did we have any old VRDs that were grandfathered in, if they had six bedrooms and they were renting them out?
I think there, I don't know if any of that, have more than six were built before the five-bedroom limitation went into effect. If there were, they would have been, they would have been grandfathered, and that was well before these two houses were built. I'm not sure exactly when the five-bedroom limitation went into effect, when the, that definition went into the building codes.
Richard, I noticed that you meant, you mentioned that the commercial code was somewhat strict, mentioned fire sprinkler systems. Is there a lot more than sprinkler systems to bring it up to code where, commercial code?
I'm no expert on exactly what the building code requires, but in, in talking with our building inspector, he was saying that it's principally some, uh, some fire-resistant construction is, is the biggest thing, and that can be met through sprinklers, or it can be, I believe it can be met through, like thicker wallboard that's more fire-resistant, so it, so it lasts longer before burning through, and that kind of thing. Also, one thing that is, that distinguishes, or that's important to keep in mind between the structural code and the residential code is, there's a lot of things that, that a building built under the residential code doesn't need a building permit for, but anything under the commercial code, you know, if you, if you look at it funny, you need a building permit for it. I mean, there's a lot of, it's much tighter than what, what needs a building permit, not painting or things like that, but, but a lot of things that you could do in a residential structure without a permit you can't do under a structural code.
I have a follow-up question, but I'm not sure I need to now. Basically, Rhodes End County at the time that was built or not residential districts existed, Rhodes End, like R-1, like we have in, where you couldn't build a commercial building anyways. Do you know if that was the case?
Not sure, would you repeat that?
Yes, my question is, is Rhodes End prior to city annexation, very similar to R-1 code being applied to Rhodes End at that point in time?
Yes.
That would have prohibited commercial buildings to be built?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the county R-1A zoning is very similar in the allowed uses to, to what the city allows. There's, there's, there are a number of differences, but they're, they're similar, they're both basically limited to single-family.
Am I right, are both of these renewals?
Yes.
And last year, they had six bedrooms and they were approved?
But yes, but the six-bedroom limitation was put, or the five-bedroom limitation was as part of the health and safety standards that were put in effect in two thousand fourteen, so they became subject to that.
Thank you for helping me understand that. And one of these buildings had mentioned bunk rooms, can you talk a little bit about that? And aren't they for sleeping, and aren't they considered bedrooms?
My understanding is that the bunk rooms were small rooms, actually, I think they were, if I remember correctly, around seventy square feet or maybe even smaller than that, that had a triple-decker bunk beds in them. Those rooms, the problems with those rooms were that they had too many occupants for the size of the room, because you have to have seventy square feet for the first two occupants and fifty for each additional person above that, and it wasn't even, they weren't even seventy square feet. And also, the bunk beds, I believe, blocked the egress window, so it's my understanding that the bunk rooms have been decommissioned as such, so they're not, they don't have the bunk beds in them anymore, is what I'm, what I'm told.
Are those rooms locked off, do you know?
I don't know, they don't have to be locked off, they just can't be used as bedrooms.
Really? I have, I have kids, they're grown now, but would, anyway, that just seems kind of funny to me that we don't lock them off if they aren't available to use, that we don't, but the owners would have to do that, but I mean, that whatever the conditions of the permit would be, make those unavailable.
Well, again, as, as my understanding, that they're not used for sleeping purposes anymore, so.
So this is basically on a good faith, mention that they're only using them for, say, a sitting room or anything else like that, just on good faith?
Watch television in there, or.
So the bunks have been removed from the rooms?
That's my understanding.
Is it enforceable?
Sorry?
Is the five-bedroom in a six-bedroom house enforceable? How do we know?
Sure, I mean, we do, we do inspections, that's why we know that they've got, had more than, than five bedrooms, because we were, we were doing the health and safety inspections, and that's how we determined, you know, we identified, and also, you know, when they originally applied, they said six bedrooms, so we knew that, and then, you know, during the inspections, we saw clearly that, you know, there were, there were more than five bedrooms, and, you know, we were looking for compliance in general with the health and safety standards.
Any other questions?
So I have one more. If this was a VR zone, none of this would apply, they can have as many bedrooms as they wanted, correct?
If built to, under the commercial standards and brought up to the, to the structural code standards, then yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is the time for the appellant to testify. Your testimony is limited to fifteen minutes. Board members, I'd like to ask if we can send staff to at least thirty-five or so, if we can extend the time to thirty-five minutes, if that's all right? So your testimony is limited to thirty-five minutes, including rebuttal, but not including time answering questions from the board. Do you wish to reserve any time for rebuttal?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Five minutes rebuttal, okay. All right, go ahead, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Dean Alterman, my address is eight oh five Southwest Broadway, number twenty-seven fifty, Portland nine seven two oh five, and I'm appearing here as attorney for the appellants Emerald Cove LLC, Mark Young and Suzanne Young in these two cases. Although the facts, the, the legal issues are exactly the same in both cases, and so I will attempt to deal with both together. The cheeks, who are the principals of Emerald Cove, and Suzanne Young are both here, if you wish them to testify simply as to the fact that their houses in fact have more than five bedrooms, and that they have been rented out for short-term purposes since before Rhodes End and their houses were annexed. They're available to do that. Before beginning, I do have one question, which is that one of the planning commissioners, Commissioner Hinton, owns property within two hundred fifty feet of the Emerald Cove House. I don't know if that is a conflict or not, but it's within the notice area, and the only thing I'd ask you, if you think it's not a conflict, is just whether you have any particular observations of the Emerald Cove House from being in the neighborhood, or whether it's ever come to your attention.
Is there any conflict of interest of?
All right, thank you. I had a, an organized presentation in mind, but I think it might be more efficient for me just to respond to the questions that you raised. In particular, I'd like to start with the question Commissioner Bryson raised about what happens if you rent an entire house out for longer than a week and if it's not a vacation rental dwelling. This, I think, illustrates the problem with the city's interpretation of the ordinance as it stands now. On the one hand, the city, the city suggests that the limitation imported from the state building code prohibits a vacation rental from having more than five bedrooms. On the other hand, the application provides space for ten rooms, suggesting that ten rooms are allowable, and I think in fact have been allowed in the past. The occupancy standard for lodging houses in the state code is sixteen people, but I understand the city has regularly approved occupancies of more than sixteen people. If I direct your attention to the definition, to the definition and the limitation in the city ordinance, in no event shall occupancy exceed the Oregon Residential Specialty Code lodging house limitations applicable to the residential structure. Now, I have an argument, I won't repeat it, that I made in my letter, which is that if you are something other than a lodging house, there are no lodging house limitations that apply to the residential structure. Instead, I'd like to point out something else. The lodging house definition in the state building code has two parts. One of them is a limitation, a flat-out absolute limitation of sixteen guests. Period. That is a limitation the city doesn't enforce. The other is not a limitation at all, it's definitional. A lodging house is a thing that has five guest rooms or fewer that is rented out. I'd like to follow on the question you asked, Commissioner Bryson. If we were to imagine a house that was rented out for a month, would it be a lodging house? It's a building, it contains, it contains guest rooms, rent is paid in money, goods, or labor, or otherwise. But there's nothing in that state building code definition, under the staff's interpretation, that says that is not a lodging house. It's a building that has got five guest rooms. The way around it suggested by Mr. Townsend, who I think explained both the city's case and ours very fairly, the way around it is to say that, well, if you're actually living there, you're not guests. And that, I submit, is the whole point of this, of the state's change to the code, where they use hostels as the reference. There's a difference between a guest room and a bedroom. The limitation in the code, in the state code, is guest rooms, not bedrooms. I'd like to suggest to you that having a guest implies having a host. Can't have a guest without a host to have the guest. That's why the code talks in terms of lodging houses, where there is a host. Where there is, as Mr. Townsend said, somebody living on site, that's what makes a hotel a hotel, there is a host. That's what makes a bed and breakfast or a hostel, there is a host, and therefore the rooms are guest rooms. By contrast, when an entire house is rented out, there is no host. There are no guest rooms. The rooms are not being rented out individually as they would be in a hotel, or in an apartment, or in a, or in a boarding house. The entire building is being rented out. In order to say that those are guest rooms, we go down a path where it's clear that the city simply isn't following the state definition. You have two very easy ways to solve the difficulty that that interpretation would give you. One is to say that if a building was lawfully rented out, unlawfully for this purpose means in compliance with the zoning codes that applied, before it was annexed to the city, then that use may continue as long as it stays current within the non-conforming provisions of the code. Another way is to say that if a house is rented out entirely as one piece, that it may continue to be rented out entirely as one piece, that it is not a lodging house. You simply have too many problems that land if you state that any house with more than five guest rooms is outside the definition of a lodging house, and then grant licenses to people who are applying with six, seven, eight, or ten sleeping areas as your application calls for it. That's simply inconsistent, and it can't be what the city council intended. The occupancy limitation, again, that's the only part of the lodging house definition that the city has imported, the occupancy limitation is sixteen people, and yet, that's the part that the city regularly chooses not to apply to these licenses. That, that simply can't be the law. Whether, there's a more interesting question Mr. Townsend raised, which is whether the use was legal before these properties were annexed, and in this, he's suggesting that the state building code somehow made it illegal. But there isn't any evidence that it did. The question's whether the Lincoln County zoning code allowed vacation rental use before these houses and the rest of Rhodes End were annexed. Whether the houses, first, whether they were in compliance with the state building code or not, is not a land use question, that's not a lawful use question. That's, to give an example, since I don't want to speed down the highway, let us say that you have a structure that is required to have three fire extinguishers, but it has only two. The use can be perfectly legal, and yet it's in violation of something that doesn't make the use illegal. It has to be fixed, they should buy another fire extinguisher, but the use is perfectly legal, it was lawful and pre-existing, as it was in this case. Again, I direct you to the concept that a guest room is not the same thing as a bedroom. If the city council had intended to limit houses, to limit vacation rental dwellings to five bedrooms, they would have said so, they would not have tried to drag in a definition from somewhere else without a number. If they had intended to impose limitations based on the distinction between lodging houses, places with five or fewer guest rooms, and hotels, places with six or more guest rooms, they would have done so, but they didn't. If you adopt the staff's interpretation, I think you're forced to the conclusion that it's basically illegal to rent out a six-bedroom house, long-term, in it's basically illegal to rent out a six-bedroom house, long-term in Cannon Beach, without complying with the structural specialty code. And that can't be the intent of the code. It's certainly not how the code is being enforced. As regards intent, I'd like to read to you a little bit from an email that Wes Ryan, who I understand is or was a very recent city councillor, sent to Mr. Appicello and Mr. Townsend back on June 22nd of this year. It exists in the city's file. Now, here is my dilemma. I'm quoting Mr. Ryan now. "I was one of the original co-authors of the VRD ordinance, and while I still defend the original intent of the ordinance, I find that I can no longer support the ordinance. In a nutshell, we originally meant for the ordinance to identify VRDs and to make sure they paid the appropriate TRT, transient rental, taxes. At that time, most VRDs were owner homes being rented out part of the year to vacationers. After 9/11, groups and families started traveling together. They need accommodations for eight to 20 people at a time." Certainly, I think, if he had intended a limitation to 16 people, he wouldn't have said, he wouldn't have referred in this email from this summer to groups of eight to 20, which suggests he wasn't thinking that a definition incorporated by reference from the state building code was going to limit occupancy to 16. "VRDs are a viable and necessary option in a tourist-based economy. Keeping track of them and making sure appropriate permit fees and taxes are paid is something the city should be doing." That's some evidence of the legislative intent of the city council in adopting this ordinance. It wasn't, and there isn't anything to suggest they intended to say, "Vacation rentals shall have 16 or fewer occupants at all times," or they would have said so. And it wasn't to say they shall have only five guest rooms at a time, or they wouldn't have provided an application form with space for 10 guest rooms. I recognize that it's, this is a challenging bit of procedure because although you are here sitting as the license appeals board, the questions before you include a variety of land use questions, licensing questions, state building code questions, quite a lot of issues that hardly ever come together in the same case. And I would like to suggest a fashion in which you can grant the appeal, and the appeal, again, is only of the limitation to five guest rooms in the house, that you can grant it without creating a large precedent. First is that most people haven't appealed. You don't have a lot of cases before you on this issue. Second is, the Rhodes End situation is very unusual. It's a large area where vacation rental dwellings were very common, were allowed by Lincoln County, that was brought into the city while after the vacation, where after the city had adopted the vocational rental ordinance. In effect, the ordinance came to the property, not the property to the ordinance. And simply to say that in those circumstances, as long as the use complies with the applicable general safety inspections and is not discontinued for six months, it may so continue and may so be licensed. That's consistent with the intent of the ordinance, which was not to let people open up boarding houses and have a lot of rumors, but to let people who have been renting their houses to a single party at a time continue to rent their houses the way they had been doing. It doesn't create a lot of precedent. There aren't a lot of property owners affected because the licensing provision has been in place long enough. And it, I think, carries out the city council's intent. That's what I would ask you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I have a question. Comments that force the 16 persons rule? It's over.
I believe it's actually referred to in the city's application. This is from the city occupancy worksheet. If your VRD was constructed, sorry, let me go back one paragraph. "The Oregon Residential Specialty Code, parentheses, building code, limits the number of bedrooms to five, and depending on when your house was constructed, may limit the maximum occupancy. If your VRD was constructed on or after July 1, 2010, the number of occupants is limited to 16 persons, regardless of whether the Uniform Housing Code would allow a higher occupancy. If the maximum occupancy per the Uniform Housing Code is less than 16, then that smaller number is your maximum occupancy. The VRD is limited to five bedrooms. If your VRD was constructed prior to July 1, 2010, the 16 occupant limit does not apply." There it is. The city itself is telling applicants, "If your home is five years old or older, we will not enforce this limit from the definition." The thing that is the actual limitation in the state's definition of lodging house. The city is telling applicants, "We won't enforce it if you're lucky enough to have a home that's five years old." Now, if houses are grandfathered, they are as to part of the lodging code definition, they're grandfathered as to all of it. There is nothing in the city code that says, "We're only, we're not going to grandfather you. We're only going to aunt and uncle you." That is not in the code. There is no suggestion of that in the code. If they're grandfathered, they're grandfathered all the way, and they are exempt from the lodging house limitations as interpreted by the staff that didn't exist when these houses were put into service. They didn't exist in the Lincoln County code when they were put into service. So, you can't, you can't pick and choose. It's either all there or it's not there. The city has already and consistently taken the position that at least half, the actual occupancy limit, isn't there for houses that are five years old. And to be consistent, the city should take the position, and we ask you to do it, that the use legally established gets to continue. These uses were legally established, and they should continue. Does that, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
It's a long time.
Sorry. One of the unfortunate things we learn in law school is never to use one word when five will do.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Dean.
I think maybe one of the Cheek family members could answer this question probably more than you could, but I'm just still stuck on those bunk rooms. I want to make sure that they're not being used as sleeping rooms, and you have to convince me.
When Dr. Cheek testifies, he will answer that question for you.
I didn't know he was going to.
Apropos of definitions, this is another thing that I don't quite follow from the code, and what I understand is that the city will count a room as a bedroom if it has a bed in it that sits on the floor, but that it doesn't count as a bed if it folds up in the wall like a Murphy bed or is a couch that converts into a bed or is a Heide bed. That also has no relationship to anything in the actual lodging house definition, and it's another suggestion that the lodging house definition isn't really being applied or is being applied so sporadically as to essentially be meaningless.
Yeah, it goes with the same thing. If there is not a closet in a bedroom, it's not considered a bedroom. That can actually, we use the same ways, but there's, anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah, and it's a little different because if you've got, if you've got a guest room and the guests are sleeping in it, how do you say it's not a bedroom just because they're sleeping in something that folds up instead of something on the floor?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So, you know, like Nathan was mentioning here, you know, classified bedroom, the way I see it and the way I interpreted it a long time ago, is the bedroom has to have a closet and a door, access window, and a dimension and size. Six bedrooms meet that criteria?
I don't know, I don't know if they meet that criteria in as bedrooms or not. The dimensions certainly are spelled out in the applications, and the city's safety inspector checks for the door plus the second means of egress from the room. So, I don't know, I haven't been in the houses, but I know that that's something that is shown on the application and that the city's inspector checks. Again, I just caution you about the difference between bedrooms and guest rooms, and that the lodging house definition talks about guest rooms, not bedrooms.
Okay. And just for my own edification, roughly what the square footage, houses, bathrooms they have?
Oh, I can't, I think they're both large, but I can't tell you, but I think the owners will be happy to tell you.
All right. Any other questions?
I do have one more. Could you summarize what you said earlier about what your suggested solution is that would not set a precedent, that would be?
Yes, and I'll try to summarize it more efficiently than I did the first time. My suggested solution is that you hold as a matter of policy in these two cases, that you will grant licenses for the existing bedroom usage for those houses in Rhodes End that were lawfully rented under the Lincoln County Code before annexation, as long as they continue, as long as they don't discontinue the use for a six-month period. If they were to discontinue for six months, that's the non-conforming period in your code, and then wanted a license after that, they would have to comply with however the city should interpret the lodging house limitation to be at that time.
Thank you.
All right. Next is testimony in support of the appeal. Each person may have up to three minutes. Please state your name only for the record.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Young, and my brother Mark Young and I own a home at 5778 South, excuse me, Northwest Jetty here. Excuse me, we bought our home in 2010. At that time, it was prior to the annexation, as you know. I wanted to make sure that folks understood, and I did talk with John Oxenholt, who built our home, and our home did comply with all county inspections at the time and was lawfully approved at that time. The home has been run out, rented out regularly as a vacation rental home since, I guess, they established it. It was built in 2007, and I think they began renting it in 2008. As I mentioned, we purchased it in 2010. I did want to make a couple of points here in support. I think, Mr. Hoagland, you had asked if any other, how many other homes and things were affected by it and why others weren't. I did speak with Sea Haven Rentals, which is the group that is our property management group and such, and asked myself why folks weren't, you know, appealing this. And they said many of the reasons was the economic reason, you know, that they just didn't have the funds to continue to, I guess, sort of fight the battle, if you will. So, that is one, I guess, and two, response to your question, that there are other homes as well. Let's see here. I did want to mention that our home did pass inspection on 9/30/2014, and then they came back and said we were, did not pass inspection. There was only two minor things. It was a, the numbers on the home were dark. We needed to replace the number in the homes, and one of the CO2 detectors, they couldn't find, and it was just behind a little end table. So, we were completely compliant as of 9/30/2014, and that was Timothy Novak who did that inspection. So, we were quite surprised to then come back and find out that they, our understanding is maybe if anything at the most, we'd have to take a door off, you know, of the room, of the sleeping area. But then when we found out that they're telling us that we had to decommission and so forth this room. Now, in particular, the sleeping area that we're looking at doesn't even have a closet in it, you know, and it was counted, I guess, as a guest area and put as six, but it really, it doesn't even have a closet in it in our case. Also, I wanted to mention that during my testimony during city council, meanings when there was a lot of VRD discussions and things, that I did talk or ask directly Mr. Townsend about our home in particular or just the occupancy issue that they were grandfathered in, and he did at that time, again, agree that those were grandfathered in. So, I certainly didn't expect, you know, to be sitting here a couple of years later talking about this issue. So, did you have any questions specifically for us?
First, it's board.
So, yes.
Do you know how many people have stayed in your house at a given time?
Well, the occupancy is 22, but for the most part, it's multi-generational families that come and do reunions and family gathers and things. And what I've, what I've noticed is although some people go up to that, because there's a lot, usually they bring little kids and things, but the average, what I've seen is somewhere between 16 to 22, that it's.
Can you give me, back to you on what the square footage of your houses and how many?
If my memory serves me correctly, when you asked earlier, I was like, oh, gosh, I hope I can remember. I think, if I remember correctly, it is 3,400 square feet, has five, what they call guest, suite bedrooms where there's a bathroom attached to it, and then what we call a little kids' room.
So, five bathrooms?
Mm-hmm. Six, I think, actually, because I think there's one up on the third floor.
Outer room or something like that?
Yeah, it has a shower in it and things, but it's a, it's kind of on the main level. So, I'd have to probably go through and count, one, two, three, one, two, three, four. No, five bathrooms, I think, so.
So, the bedroom that we're talking about, the one that?
In my case, sleeping area, yeah.
This, it has an egress window. Is it on the?
Second, second floor. No closet.
I'm.
You know, I looked when we were trying to prepare for this and, you know, although I used to do HR for 25 years and no labor law and so forth, I couldn't find specifically where it referenced a closet, per se, but that was my understanding when I went into it, is that I always assumed that a bedroom had a closet associated with it, so, or a guest area. So, if you'd like, I do have a picture of the room that is in question for us, but it may not apply, so.
Sure, I'd be happy.
Okay.
Bed, so it only sleeps one person?
Yeah, it pulls out, so it can sleep two, two little kids. Maybe eight by eight. I mean, that, you can see how it's the length of that daybed, so it's maybe seven or eight feet max, probably. So, again, I guess, I would also like to just let you know that, I mean, speaking with Sea Haven yesterday, that the folks that did decommission a room or just shut, lock up a door and things are getting numerous complaints now from there, because we get a lot of repeat renters. And that's why people actually reserve our home almost a year in advance because they want to get a certain week and come down with their families and things. And the existing homes that sort of rolled over, if you will, you know, are actually getting numerous complaints to Sea Haven and so forth about why do we not have the access that we had before? So, I think it's, it's not going over well with folks as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I was just looking at the application, and I see, it says, "Please indicate number of bedrooms proposed for the use of the maximum occupancy you are proposing for your license, VRD license."
Right.
It's written down five.
Well, what?
Of 20.
Yeah, and I actually brought, I have an email as well. We were, we weren't sure because that, we were questioning about what constitutes a bedroom, and in discussions I had with Sea Haven, and they were working hand-in-hand with Timothy Novak and things, trying to understand this new five-bedroom, you know, sleeping area thing. And so, we decided to go ahead and go with five, because at that point, we thought all we had to do was remove a door to this kids' room. So, at that point, we said five, so it was not any intent to.
Yeah, that's why I was confused, they looked down at the list of rooms, and there's seven.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's not true. There's, there was six. We count it, although, again, is it really a bedroom? Is the sixth one, is questioned? So, there's, I think that was an error on Tim's part, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Hello, I'm David Cheek and a member of Emerald Cove, and my brother.
I'm Michael Cheek, also a member of Emerald Cove. And just wanted to start out with saying that I live in Portland, and we come from a big family, and one of the reasons why we just wanted to build Emerald Cove, I've always loved coming to visit my brother, and we thought of getting family together. We have eight siblings, and so, when we built the house and talked with John Oxenholt about it, he said, you know, he could build a place where we could all come and get together as a family, and not only that, but we could also rent it, rent the place out. So, we, when we developed the building and looked at the building plans, it is designed as six bedrooms and then three other sleeping areas. I hadn't thought of, thought of it, but again, a bedroom, I've always thought it has a closet and again, egress. So, we had bunk rooms, and the particular bunk room in question, which Hannah, you had the question about, I thought it would be neat to have, you know, a triple bunk leg. So, that's the way we put it in initially, but when we had the inspector come and realized that it inhibited one of the egress, we actually took all of that bunk beds completely out, out of that room. So, to answer your question, that's, that's been done.
Could I interrupt you to ask a question just to clear it up? So, did Timothy Novak go back to your house and see that the bunk beds had been removed?
I'm not sure if, I have to ask, I don't know if he did. I know that when I talked with him, I did talk with him in June, asked if he wanted to come back and inspect the rooms. He said he didn't, didn't need to. So, I don't know if he's, I know that he talked to Aaron from Sea Haven Rentals, but I did talk to him directly and by phone and said, "Well, don't you want to inspect?" He said, "No." So, but I did tell him what we did, and right now, there is a couch in that room. This Emerald Cove has, I believe, approximately 4,000 square feet. You can find it online.
4,500 square feet.
4,500. It has five, five bathrooms.
It was built, you know, approved by Lincoln County. It was built, you know, approved by Lincoln County to have six bedrooms and two bunk rooms. And that's how it was originally built. The plan was set that way. And it was built that way. And, you know, like David says, we built this because we come from a large family. We know the value of large groups getting together and vacationing. And we built this thing so that possibly even potentially using it for a retirement home for some of our family. So, yeah. Oh, yeah, we fill it up.
We have had, I'm not staying there, because my brother lives in town, so we spread the people out. But we, you know, there's more than 35 when we get together and say, have a dinner there. And the place is set up, again, for 24 people.
The problem is, is when all this started, and I, also John Oxenholt built our home in 2008, and Sea Haven Rentals has been helping us manage this.
Go ahead.
Several of the ladies who take phone calls from people, you know, wanting to come stay in the house, not our house particularly, but the others, they were distraught because they were getting so many unhappy people, because people are, you know, the other homeowners were reducing the number of beds and number of people that their houses could, you know, sleep. And I think there's a real need in this community for this kind of a building, because we have church groups, we have small corporations, we have groups of families that come and stay year after year. And these groups are anywhere from, you know, 10 to 24. And our house is approved for 24.
And since the house was built the way it was, and we presumed that was all the codes and everything were, again, properly followed, we would just ask the council to, again, grandfather what we were already doing, which, again, I believe, according to our attorney, is appropriate and to allow us to continue to do so. But we are very respectful. We've actually paid taxes since before the annexation, the transient, you know, room tax, and Michael could speak to that as well. But we are a good member of the community. We are very sensitive to, you know, making sure that the noise level and this sort of thing, we respond to those things.
And we appreciate the safety issues. You know, I think it's great. And we've upgraded carbon monoxide things, made sure all our egresses are appropriate so people can get out in case of fire, all those things. I think it's good.
So, when this was built, what year was it built?
2008.
2008.
It started, constructed in 2008.
It was built as a single-family residence initially. So you could have six, seven, whatever bedrooms. Then it was licensed to a VRD after it was finished, after it was built, is that correct?
It wasn't licensed as VRD until Rhodes End was annexed. And then we were given a license in 2014 with the six bedrooms and two bunk rooms. And that's why on the application this year, I did the same thing, because I didn't think I should change it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is testimony in opposition to the appeal. Each person has up to three minutes. Is there anybody in opposition? Seeing none. Now we have neutral testimony. Each person has up to three minutes. Is there any neutral testimony? Seeing none. Now is time for rebuttal. The appellants have reserved five minutes.
Appellants, that makes it very simple. Zero, it's for five.
All right. Thank you. All righty. Since that's all, testimony has been done, now it is time to close the hearing.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead. Mr. Appicello.
Richard, there was a question about terminology between bedroom and gentleman, between guest rooms and bedrooms. Is there any ground that exists out there, legal precedent or the two? Or, I agree with what I heard here from members that a bedroom had to have a door, it had a closet and terminology. Boarding house, something, is there something different between a guest room and a bedroom?
Looking at the residential code, there is no definition in the residential code for bedroom. So I believe it's typically a Realtor issue, definition when you talk about having a closet. Definition of guest room is, there is no definition of guest room in the code. So this is typically where I give legal advice and if you haven't closed a hearing or closed a record, so I usually wait until after you've done that and to-
All right. I'll entertain a motion to close a public hearing and public record?
Second.
I was going to entertain one, I didn't make one.
All right.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Hearing none. All right. Pursuant to municipal code section 5.14.090 E-3, decisions on license appeals shall be issued within 60 days of the date of the close of the public hearing. All right, now it's time for discussion and tentative decisions.
Can I now ask that same question? You can give me that answer.
Magical cure for this issue. Staff is saying they have exceeded the limitations of the city code. Mr. Townsend said there is the issue of, is it a lodging house under the building code? But even if you don't agree that it is, the code billed by reference says the lodging house. Adopting another limitation by reference. The example he used was, pool can be no taller than the standard for a cell tower. So it's a referential kind of adoption of a standard. So even if you don't believe that under the building code, it would strictly apply. Under the city ordinance, they're saying, I can't tell you, staff is telling, they believe that the number of bedrooms exceed the limitation set forth for, this is the term guest. We're talking about their interpretation of applying it, there are too many rooms. And in bedroom limitation, in person limitation, yeah, that would be different, right? The 16-person limitation actually went into effect in July of 2010. And it says it right there on the worksheet. And that's how the building codes division interprets it, is that they only apply it prospectively from that date. So that was why the code, the worksheet says what it says, is that it's only applied, it's certainly enforced, but only for, after it went into effect, in the building code sections.
So what's limiting the appellants, the number of people they can have in their VRD is not the 16, because their houses were built before that date? But the fact that the law prohibits the number of people can sleep in a bedroom?
And that's how, staff has been interpreting it insistent with the way the building codes division interprets it. Now, I could take the appellant's comments as, well, you're really not enforcing it because if you adopted 16, you adopted 16, so I guess we could, staff, you're interpreting it wrong. We need to enforce 16 before, but staff has been interpreting it probably more generously than they could. You could probably agree with staff's interpretation. But that's not actually the basis for this appeal. The basis for this appeal has to do with the limitation to five rooms, five bedrooms, and that limitation is to, I believe, Richard said he doesn't remember, that it's been around, I think, 70s in some of the board sheet information.
Well, I guess-
There's one other. The email from Wes Ryan was actually an ex-party communication, so that's why it was. Formerly issued, brought up as a, or at least staff, yet to consider land use matters in the 14 appeal.
Well, I guess what I've heard a lot of is the definition of lodging. Appellant and staff have both brought that up numerous and talked about it a lot. I do believe lodging, VRDs are lodging, due to the fact it also mentions you, somebody can rent a bed, or one room or multiple rooms. Me, to me, VRDs are hosted. A homeowner does host by having phone numbers if there's problems. They service the customer. Property manager service the customers. If they need towels, towels are brought to them. If something needs fixed, somebody, the host comes and fixes it for them. So I do believe VRDs are. They might not be on site, but they are hosted. Part of that said that it could be the one room or the entire building. Correct.
I would agree with that. They're not residents, they're guests of the VRD.
I'd like to ask Richard a question. Richard, do they meet all the other criteria? Yeah. Richard, too. I mean, I would just limit your responses to what's in the record. So I'm thinking more like, if there's six bedrooms, that means they have to fix parking spaces?
The approval that you have before you was, was subject to only one condition, so, and that was to limit the number of bedrooms. So that indicates that everything else was in compliance.
I have a question about the securing of the door against entry, specifically is, they said that though they were built in compliance with six bedrooms, five of which originally were for rental, and then it said it had to be secured against entry. And she had brought up about it being locked or not locked. Is that something that needs to happen?
Just in code, there's a restriction in the code for, that allows the planning director to impose conditions to secure rooms against entry when you don't have, for example, efficient parking. I believe that same language is in the code about. The authorities there in the code and the precedents there in the code, that doesn't mean that it's for some other purpose. I mean, usually, I think the testimony, the written documents, there's usually another purpose to a room when it's repurposed.
All right, game rooms with a height of bed.
Right.
I also have a second question. The attorney there brought up the, why does the application have room for 20 rooms, I'm sorry, 10 rooms and 20 people? Is that also for commercial buildings built as VRDs in a commercial zone?
I pointed that out, I'm sorry, that there's two codes on the worksheet. One code is the 1997 housing code, and the other code is the reference to the lodging house limitations. That's just a calculation based upon, you know, what is the total occupancy limits for this home based on the 1997 code? And then there's another that applies, the residential code. That's why there's, it's not an authorization to have 10. This is a worksheet to calculate what your total occupancy could be based on one code and then you'll also apply the other code. With, for sleeping.
Like the game room with a height of bed? So that's, does that-
Appeal of the housing-
Oh, we're specific to this right here.
Remember the, one limitation, the lodging house, the code, door code, it says lodging house limitation. The last sentence, the bedroom limitations and the numeric, there's two limitations on bathroom. It's there, it's clarified, limitations. One, you have a small house, the 1997 housing code will operate, restrict number of-
You've got to remember, these are purposed rooms. It doesn't matter what's in them, basically. If you have a couch with a TV and it says purposed room as a TV, or a sitting room, so, that's what I'm saying. You don't lock a room up and say, you can't use this room at all, because we're just considering bedrooms. Sleeping.
So this is a TV room with a bed, daybed.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I know one of the concerned about, that the occupancy of VRDs was the noise level that would be created if there was 20 people there, the, all the bathrooms at the same time and the extended area. I don't see an issue with that in this situation. Facilities, or these homes are capable of, so I'm not really concerned with the occupancy.
I think we're talking more about the definition of what the rules state and-
It's pretty clear.
Pretty clear to me.
I understand the second home, but the first home's issue was similar in that it has six bedrooms and not five, correct? Is that also, they're both having the same six and not five?
Correct.
Okay. And they were originally built within code by saying they have six bedrooms, but that their vacation rental dwelling application said that only five of them would be rented out?
No, the applications, the original applications we got, which I believe you have in the record, were both of them said they had six. The renewal application for the Youngs said five, and I think you had the testimony that they were contemplating a way to come into compliance with the five. But they were lawfully built with six bedrooms. But the applications, again, originally said six and then one of them said five, but again, we thought that was just, that wasn't an attempt to mislead. We interpreted that as an intent to come into compliance, but things changed. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. City Attorney, if we deny the appellants till here, what is their recourse after us?
In a quasi judicial proceeding, that is not a land use proceeding, the appeal will be to the circuit court under a writ of review, which is basically where they provide procedural due process, that they have notice and an opportunity heard, which is the purpose of this hearing. Did the board comply with the essential- Did the board comply with the essential requirements of law? That is, did you apply the correct law, and did you apply it correctly? And is there substantial competent evidence in the record to support the decision? Not, it's not reviewed as if de novo. It's not reviewed by the court as a remake, if they were the original decision maker. It's reviewed to see if those three...
So it doesn't go to counsel?
No.
It goes straight to the circuit court if they want to appeal?
Of course. The code to make a decision.
I also would like to bring up that their attorney also said that there have been other houses that have been built within the last five years, and they were grandfathered in, to be in non-compliance. Is that...
We've kind of closed the hearing and closed the records. While we can answer questions about what's in the record, we can't introduce new stuff without inviting them back up to say rebut this.
Okay.
My thought on that is, to me, there's no proof, so...
Okay.
There's no proof?
It's...
Okay. And there's no definition of what is or isn't a bedroom?
Not in the residential.
Any other discussion? There's no further discussion. I would entertain a motion.
I hate to do it, but I'll move that we deny the...
Go on. The motion should be a separate motion for each...
Do we have to close the deliberations or the discussion?
No, this will close the dip, the vote will close it.
Okay.
Separate, right?
Yeah.
I'd move that we deny the license appeal on 5 dash 0, 3, Emerald Code, LDCC.
LLC.
LLC?
LLC.
I have a motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Before you do that, it would be helpful if you explain why, why deny. We have something to prepare, something to base it on.
That we have to... That's where I'm coming from. The code, that's a better use of the terminology.
In terms of just native oral decision directing staff to prepare written findings, and that would be me, you're concurring with the presentation of the planning director in terms of his interpretation and application of the standard?
That is correct.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Okay, roll call?
Hinton?
To think about it.
Do you accept or deny?
Yes.
Do we, do we fine?
Yes, to deny. Griffiths?
Yes, to deny.
Cunningham? Bryson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Long?
Yes.
Shinkaries?
Entertain the motion. And that's the second motion?
I'd like to motion that we deny the license appeal, 2015 dash four, Young, Mark and Suzanne, or, sorry, Mark and Suzanne Young, in findings with the planning directors having, to establish it being five bedrooms.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Cunningham? Bryson? Griffiths?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Long?
Yes.
Shinkaries?
Based on these decisions, staff is directed to prepare a final orders for adoption. The board's decision shall be final on the date of mailing. The decision to the appellants, the board's decision are the final decisions of the city and are appealable only by right writ or a review to circuit court.
Is there any other matters? Hearing none? Then we're adjourned.
This is for next week?
It's a toggle, just click it down.